Sharon Spencer, the pledge of allegiance towards the ultimate father.
That's right. Almighty God, we thank you for the privilege of coming together tonight in the community in which we live. We thank you for all the city employees, our citizens. We thank you for all the good works that they did and for the wonderful atmosphere in which we are here tonight. God, as as we go forth, be with those who are in the elections this day, be with them, wisdom and understanding and patience. Help us all to serve you in a manner that will be pleasing unto you. And Jesus' name replied, amen.
Audience, attention. Call girl, attention. Call girl, advance. Call girl, prepare the post of colors. Salute. Call girl, post of colors. Will the audience please join me in the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the Father, and to the Son, and to the Holy Spirit, whom your name is. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Call girl, return the post. Call girl at ease. Audience, please.
Thank you very much. I was nicely done. Appreciate everybody that's been here tonight. We will begin as usual with citizen comments. Do we have any citizen comments?
Yes, Mike Morris, eight forty-nine Riverside Drive.
I'm going to be very quick. I would like to personally thank the city manager, city secretary, and everybody that were able to put together, and of course Sharon was involved, discussing the details of the videotaping. I was able to read the information that was in the packet, and I am very pleased that many of the questions that I asked, in fact, most of them were covered. And I would like to very much encourage you to put this tool together and help us educate the people in Grapevine so they will use it. Thank you.
Kathleen Thompson, thirty-three seventeen Burning Log.
Good evening. By now you've heard from many Grapevine residents, myself included, who want you to vote for video recording and archiving of the council meetings. You've heard that it makes our city government more accessible, more accountable, and more transparent. But maybe you haven't heard that last spring, a bill sailed through the Texas House of Representatives Technology Committee, mandating municipalities and independent school districts of a certain size video record and archive the council meetings. The bill ran out of time last year, but all indications from the bill's author, Representative Pat Fallon, show that it will be submitted again and it will be supported again by our House District ninety-eight representative. I believe with certainty that this will soon be mandated into Texas, and you can wait until you're forced by the state to do so, or you can vote tonight for the right thing to do because it is the right thing to do. Thank you.
Tammy Akko, nine twenty Ravenswood.
Good evening, Council. My name is Tammy Akko, nine twenty Ravenswood. I have two items I would like to make comments about tonight. I've prepared a statement to get my points across and stay on topic. First item concerns apartment recycling, and second item concerns transparency in government. I would like to voice my support for the approval of Agenda Item Number Nine, applying for an apartment recycling grant through COG. Recycling is an issue near and dear to my heart because I know that the Arlington landfill looks what it looks like, and I know when I throw something away instead of recycling it, that the trash isn't going to a magical place. There is no away. There are just sanitary landfills, and the cost of expanding existing landfills like the one in Arlington are only going up. I know that the primary producers of trash in an reusable setting are commercial properties. Even though apartments are residences, when it comes to trash, they are treated as commercial properties. That means trash and recycling services are left up to the property manager to arrange. When it comes to apartments, there are a lot of moving pieces. Even though recycling can save property managers money since recycling is cheaper than conventional trash services, not every property manager is going to have this knowledge or the time to start recycling. Their days are more likely spent thinking about how to fill apartments rather than filling recycling containers. That being said, I support the pursuit of this grant so that the city can help educate property managers and apartment residents about the environmental and economic benefits of recycling. I believe it's important to extend the life of the Arlington landfill, and it's important to the bottom line of Grapevine businesses. The second item I'd like to discuss is government transparency. At the last meeting I spoke in support of a resolution to take City Council on planning meetings. I'm back again tonight to voice my support of the same resolution. Until my son is old enough to sit still for an hour, I'll have to come to these meetings without him in my life. I have a lot of friends that either can't make the meetings because of their own children or because their schedules don't permit it. I support the recording and publication of city meetings because not everyone can make the actual meeting, even though they would like to. And having the meetings recorded allows them to get the full story without a secondhand recap. So tonight I urge you to support Resolution Number Four and begin videotaping and archiving city meetings. Thank you.
Emilia Torle, eighty-one seventeen Preston Road, Dallas.
Good evening. My name is Emmy Torle, and I'm here representing Clean Energy Fuels. My purpose for speaking to you tonight is to give the council an update on what Clean Energy is doing in the DFW Grapevine area. First, I'd like to briefly describe what we do. Clean Energy designs, builds, and operates natural gas fueling stations. We provide fueling solutions for both private and public customers. We have developed station infrastructure in twenty-five states and Canada. Our achievements in the natural gas industry are vast. We truly believe the advantages of natural gas are realized by our customers and their surrounding communities. Employers of natural gas save money on fuel, decrease greenhouse gases by up to ninety percent, reduce the U.S.' dependence on foreign oil, and help pave the way for the future of alternative fuels. I've had encouraging discussions with Grapevine's fleet manager, Patrick Hughes, and I hope we can get you, the council, interested in exploring the fuel. I believe Grapevine would greatly benefit from the hit dealer natural gas. Thank you for your time.
Harley Young, forty-one thirteen Meadow Drive.
Mayor Tate, council, and audience. Couple weeks ago, I was chastised for not being against recycling. That's far from the truth. What I'm more responsible, what I'm more concerned about is being told what to do by somebody that maybe don't have all the answers. So tonight, even though I'm not for or against Item Nine on your agenda, after reading the summation in the agenda tonight, my question is, what is it other than a program to recycle stuff from apartments? There was no description in it at all. If we're going to be applying for a grant of fifty-five thousand dollars, which is what it said there, and then we have to pay it back sometime in the future, before we even go that far, I think the people of Grapevine need to know what the heck it is. Now, this is probably premature. I'm sure that staff is going to tell us what it is. But it would have been nice to be able to read even a summation in the agenda stuff. So I didn't have to come up here tonight and say something which I really don't like doing, but I seem to do it on a regular basis, to find out just what it is. Please, if you're going to spend fifty-five grand on something that I still think might go into something like my green bucket that I hate, or the fact that I've got the brown paper bags for grass clippings, what's this one all about? Thank you.
That's all. That it? Okay. Thank you very much for the citizen's response. Next, we have some presentations. We'll begin with Texas Department of Transportation District Engineer Brian Barth, and Stan Laster is going to make that introduction.
Thank you, Mayor, and the City Council. As the mayor has just said, we have Brian Barth with us tonight. He is the District Engineer for the fourth District of Texas. He has been in that position since November first. And Brian is going to brief the council on the FM twenty-four ninety-nine project, which is currently under construction, and the SH one twenty-one, Section thirteen project, which is soon to be under construction.
Thanks, Stan. Mayor, council, thanks for the opportunity to be here. Before I get started, I'd like to introduce a few folks that I brought with me. First, Randy Redman is our manager of our strategic projects in the Metroplex. He's managing the big innovative finance projects in the Metroplex. Second is Joe Mallard. He's our current project manager for the completion of the Connector twenty-four ninety-nine project. And then Alvin Meyer works for Joe on this twenty-four ninety-nine project. Let me run through some slides here. First, I got to mention our mission. Our mission is to work with others to provide safe and reliable transportation solutions for the state of Texas. I mention that because none of these projects happen without partnership, and I appreciate the partnership that we've had with City Grapevine on getting a lot of these projects built in this area. The other thing I got to talk about is safety. That number at the top is the number of fatalities on Texas roadways in calendar year two thousand thirteen. That's a big number. That's about the same number that died in the nine eleven incident in New York City. But that number happens every year in Texas, and nobody blinks an eye. And we can eliminate eighty percent of those if you just don't drink and drive, don't drive while distracted, don't text, don't talk on the phone, and wear your seatbelt. It's amazing how many incidents happen that a fatality happens just because someone didn't have their seatbelt on. So a little summary on the DFW Connector project. It was an eight-point-four mile project. One point one billion dollars was spent on that facility, and in that picture there, essentially what was built is what's shown in blue. The rest of the colors, we're still working on to find additional funding to do when those facilities are warranted. That contract was executed in two thousand nine, and as you know, was substantially complete earlier last year, two thousand thirteen. Moving on to the FM twenty-four ninety-nine project. This is the project that we're grade separating twenty-four ninety-nine from the two cross streets there, the Mall Stars and Stripes and Grapevine Mills Boulevard. Essentially, it's to build the new four main lanes underneath those bridges and have the, build the front roads up at grade to connect to the existing streets as they connect today. It's about a ninety million dollar project. Work began at the end of two thousand thirteen, and I'll show you some slides of some of that work. I'm sure you've seen it. We're estimating the completion in two thousand seventeen. I heard from the contractor earlier today that he thinks it'll be done before that. He's just not willing to share that early schedule yet until he's more convinced it can happen. So what's happening now is there's a few last parcels of right-of-way to acquire. And you'll see in the picture here in a second, there's utility relocations that have to happen on the east side of the roadway. And then what's that, you know, the construction that's happening right now is the new northbound twenty-four ninety-nine front road, the drainage, the grading, the paving. And then what you're going to see very shortly is just north of Grapevine Mills Boulevard, the Creek Bridge. Oh, that bridge is going to be replaced, and the first part of that will be the east side of that bridge that gets constructed. They are about eleven percent complete on that twenty-four ninety-nine project. Here's some of the construction that you can see when you drive through there. This is, we're probably standing at about somewhere near the Cracker Barrel looking north. And that first signal is Stars and Stripes, and then the signal way off in the distance is Grapevine Mills Boulevard. But you can see where the work is happening on the east side of that roadway. This is in that same area, but looking south. You're probably wondering what all those white pipes are sticking up out of the ground. Those are utility locates. So there's a few utilities in that area that have to be relocated. This is a section looking back south. You can see the lazy boy there on the left of that picture. But again, the grading work is happening for the new roadways in that area. The upcoming activities, again, the right-of-way and utility relocations will continue. I mentioned earlier, but the eastern portion of the Denton Creek Bridge is going to be removed and start building the new bridge. The move, the Stars and Stripes traffic, we're going to move that to the new construction that's happened. And then we'll continue that northbound construction on FM twenty-four ninety-nine Front Road. And I guess what I'd like to do now, well, we've got a few pictures. This is that Creek Bridge just north of Grapevine Mills Boulevard. This, this bridge is in need of repair. That was the main reason we wanted to replace it. It's got some, you know, it's perfectly safe, but it's got some high-cost maintenance issues on the northern end because of the bump in the, the traffic that's moving over it. There's some movement in that slab, and it's causing that abutment to crumble, and we've got to continually fix it. So one reason we're replacing those bridges is that. The other reason is get the additional capacity for FM twenty-four ninety-nine. What I'd like to do now is kind of walk you through the plans and show you what it looks like and what the access looks like. And I don't have a pointer, so I'm going to have to talk you through this. The, this is a picture at the south end, so those blue lanes are tying into the existing bridge. If you were going south, that goes over and ties into one twenty-one going south, and on the same direction coming north, you fly over on those bridges and get into this blue section. So if you're going north, northbound that first, and north is to the right on this drawing, and south is to the left. So going north, you're going to exit that, if you want to get to the mall area of Stars and Stripes, that first blue ramp gives you access to Stars and Stripes, just like you do today. And then why don't I walk you through northbound, and then we'll come back southbound. And then, so you get, you get that, you're then on the front road, and you did have access to Grapevine Mills Boulevard there, so you can turn into the mall area from there. And then continuing north, there then is a ramp back to the twenty-four ninety-nine main lanes. And again, the purple part there on that drawing is the Creek Bridge. You can see we're building the northbound front road for some distance there. And then let's walk back to the south. So if you're going southbound from the Flower Mound area, and you want to get to Grapevine Mills Boulevard or Stars and Stripes, you take this ramp right here at the Creek Bridge, go into the left, and then you have access to Grapevine Mills Boulevard, just like you do today, and then the Stars and Stripes. And then past Stars and Stripes, you can get back on and go one twenty-one southbound. So the access to the mall area doesn't change in this project. What does change is you get a lot of that through traffic out of the way of the folks that want to access the local businesses in that area. All the existing driveways will remain. On the northbound side, where the northbound front road is being rebuilt, all those driveways will be reconstructed as part of this project. And why don't I, why don't I stop there and see if you have any questions on twenty-four ninety-nine access? The next thing I'd like to move to is the one twenty-one project to the north.
So if I'm at Stars and Stripes Way, and I want to take twenty-six north to Louisville, I would go continue to the east on Stars and Stripes Way, and I tie into Louis, one twenty-one north to Louisville?
Yeah, the same way. If you were coming out of the mall and wanted to go to one twenty-one, you could go straight through that, that interchange, and go over that bridge. That bridge is going to look like it's at grade because twenty-four ninety-nine is going under. So you'd take and go the same way you go today to get over to State Highway one twenty-one to go northbound.
Mr. Barth, our mall, of course, is very important to the economy of this community. Could you explain the details in the contract, I presume this is Northgate, that speaks to closing access during holiday periods?
The contract requires them to work with us on access to the mall during holidays. We've developed a plan just recently that cuts about eight months off the construction of the project so that the one thing that will be impacted is if you're going northbound on twenty-four ninety-nine, wanting to turn left into Stars and, on Stars and Stripes into the mall. That left turn is going to go away for some period of time, and you go up to Grapevine Mills Mall, and we're adding dual left turns to Grapevine Mills Boulevard to turn into the mall. And what that's going to do is that's going to enable us to take eight months off that time. So instead of impacting maybe two Christmas periods, we'll only impact one Christmas period with that at Stars and Stripes. The, we've done some traffic modeling, and the going all the way to Grapevine Mills Boulevard actually handles the traffic better than than the existing intersection at Stars and Stripes today.
And is the manager of our mall involved in the conversations with you all when you're discussing this?
Yes, he is. I don't have the details of that, but he is involved.
Do you have any questions?
Okay, let's move on to the one twenty-one project to the north. That project is essentially built in the second half of that facility from the DFW Connector project north to the Sam Rayburn Toll Road. If you remember years ago, not years ago, a few years ago, we built the first half and put two-way traffic on it. So now we're coming back and building the second half so that we can have full capacity on one twenty-one. The total construction cost for that is about eighty million dollars. That project led in July. We had a built-in delay not to get utilities relocated, and construction begins this month. And again, we expect that construction to begin to be complete in two thousand seventeen. And again, I'm hopeful that we can reduce that schedule. What I'd like to show you is how that project kind of improves access mainly to the mall area, but we'll go through that schematic real quick here if you don't mind. So this is a, this is a view from the construction plants, and it's hard to see. And I'm hopeful that the following drawings are a lot more easier to see, but this shows that going north of what we just talked about, the interchange at one twenty-one and twenty-four ninety-nine, north is to the right again, and south is to the left. When you come over that flag or ridge, there's an exit that's getting built to Grapevine Mills Boulevard, so you can turn left or right there. And again, if I may, I may walk you through northbound, then we'll come back southbound. And then here's some better looking drawings. But again, here's that Grapevine Mills Boulevard or Sandy Lake Boulevard to the east. And so the front roads are getting built, and there's new main lanes that are grade separated from Grapevine Mills Boulevard and Sandy Lake Drive. And then going to the north, we're building these new braided ramps so both you can get off and on, right there at that location. And the ramps are grade separated, so one goes under the other. So you can get, northbound, you can get access to Freeport Parkway, and then also northbound from the front road, you can get onto one twenty-one from Grapevine Mills Boulevard. That's Freeport Parkway, and then if you're on the front road north from there, you can get back onto one twenty-one using that orange ramp there to the north. And then it ties into the existing facility at the Creek there, which goes into, does the split to the business route into Louisville or the Sam Rayburn Toll Road. And then let's go back now, back to the south. If you're going to the left on this drawing, you can see there, there's an exit to Freeport Parkway. Right now, today, there's two ways to get to Grapevine Mills Mall. One way is to exit all the way back, and the other way is to go on and take the twenty-six exit and take the curved ramp that we worked with you to get built there at the mall. So today, the new project has an exit at Freeport Parkway, and then traveling further south, there's a, there's a, if you're on the front road going southbound, you can get onto the main lanes past Freeport Parkway. If you're on the main lanes, you can exit at that same location to Grapevine Mills Boulevard, which you can't do today. Today, you have to exit and travel on the existing front road. And then you get to Grapevine Mills Boulevard, and immediately south of Grapevine Mills Boulevard, if you're on the front road, you can get onto one twenty-one main lanes headed south. And if you're on the main lanes, immediately south of Grapevine Mills Boulevard, you can take an exit that gets you right into the mall area. Which, that draw shows a tie into the existing facilities there, twenty-four ninety-nine. So let me pause there and see if anybody has any questions on one twenty-one access. We, the project that's getting built adds a substantial amount of new ramps and access to this area. Again, while there's not many on this stretch of road, all the existing driveways to the front road were made in place or be rebuilt if they're required to be rebuilt.
So it looks like we still, this includes new bridges over Denton Creek as well? Because the current ones are just the two lanes each way.
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay, and then as far as the bridges over Sandy Lake, you've got half of that in place, and basically we'll build the other one for the northbound traffic now.
That's right. So the goal was, the previous project where we didn't need additional right-of-way to build one half, we built that half and put two-way traffic on it. So now that we've got the funding and the right-of-way acquisition funding, we're building the second half. Any other questions? So that completes my presentation, and I'm available for any questions.
I do have a question, or maybe it's more of a statement. On the part of the connector that's already complete, some right-hand turn lanes are marked long, and some are very short, and that's confusing to people, I think. And when you exit out by Bass Pro to take the Main Street exit, it's about, you're on about a four or five-lane highway. It looks like the highway splits, but you're really on what you call an access road. And the speed limit's like forty or forty-five miles an hour. It's not posted very well, but you have the impression until you get to Main Street that you're just on a major express road. Most of us think of an access road as about two lanes. But you've built four or five, which people are not used to, so that's confusing to people on really what the speed limit is. And on Main Street, we have a continuous turn lane right down the center of Main Street. When you get down about the bank and the turn into McDonald's, it's got a loop, a close, a closure. It looks like a closure of that continuous turn lane. So people get in that turn lane, want to turn left into McDonald's, they get up there. It's closed. Well, they go ahead and go through it. I assume that's a violation of law that the intent is not to get in the continuous turn lane, but to turn around it. So I hope that y'all look, and that's part of the new construction, look at, you know, the consistency of the way you're marking these things and the speed limits that people are going to be able to really know, understand how to traverse the roadway this, because there is, I think, quite a bit of confusion.
Yeah. So what we're going through right now, Mayor, is kind of what we're calling a punch list with our Northgate Constructors. And we're going through the entire project and looking at things like that for inconsistencies, for any of those markings that were incorrect, and trying to get them to be more consistent. The speed limit, you know, once, once that's open for a while and traffic stabilizes, we're going to come back through and do real speed studies. And then those, those speeds will be posted and posted where, you know, consistently enough where everybody can see it.
It might be that you could post them on the, on the lanes and some. It might be that you could post them on the lanes and the outside lanes where people might be going to turn into a business, might be slower than the other three or four lanes that are really passing through. I don't know whether that's possible or not, but it's just confusion, and I think some errors or some things on the roadway to help people understand what they're supposed to do. I mean, you just don't know what to do, I don't know what to do.
Well, one thing we're trying to do is, and you've seen some of it, are what we call horizontal signing, is put the plaques on the pavement so you know which lane you should be in. So we're going to use that more as we need to and where it can clear things up like that. The other thing on that furniture that you're talking about, you know, as that property develops, you know, it will be more clear what the purpose of that roadway is, and exactly what you talked about will happen is that the right lane or the right two lanes, most of the people in those lanes will be people that are accessing those developments, and the left lanes will be people that are going through.
So anyway, I know it's been a big project and there's a learning process for all of us, but that's just an observation people have made to me, and I know there's some of myself that needs some improvement, I think.
And, you know, we're working on that, we're not going to let Northgate off the hook.
All right, thank you.
I'd like to add one more thing that Councilmember Spencer said about the mall and the outparks there and how important economically those are to Grapevine. I guess that's more a question, Stan, are we continuing this, our monthly business meetings then with Northgate as this construction progresses on 2499 and the mall? I guess that's a representative there.
Quarterly, I believe, out in that area.
It's really important that communication with the customer and where the customer would keep that up at a high level, because it's, we've had some situations in the first project where it didn't seem like Northgate was really as, you know, conscious of that as we wished they would have been.
I hear that from my wife also. Mr. Barth, I don't want to beat this horse to death, you go back to the very first project and let me look one more time at how somebody would get to Grapevine Mills Mall that is coming, for example, from the airport headed north.
Okay, so what you can't see is what's south of here, but south of here is exactly like it's out there today, okay? And so if you're coming north out of the airport and you get to this point and you take the 2499 flyover, rather than take 2499, you're going to be on that bottom purple part on the left side of the screen.
So I would exit that turquoise, which is the service road to Stars and Stripes Way.
Right, so that exit will be signed Stars and Stripes Boulevard in, and it'll also be signed Grapevine Mills Boulevard, so you can access both straights from that ramp.
I'm getting back to keeping how important the mall is to us, making sure that there is signage for Grapevine Mills Mall at that intersection.
Yep.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Barth.
Mr. Barth, one question, I have concerns, the final acceptance by Texas dot of the Highway 26 portion, specifically the signals in the area of, on 26 at Best Buy and Walmart inherited, and must hang along in there. Those signals are a source of immense frustration, and I'm wondering about the timeframe and when you think those might be turned over to us so we can get the little things synchronized.
Joel, the issue there was the railroad, and I think we've resolved the issue with the railroad?
Right, and we're still working through the plus list item on those signals to make sure that they're up to the city standards, city staff has provided some information, Northgate's working through that, and also hired several people from the Texas Department of Energy to, I'm thinking probably around around the seventh, we'll be able to completely turn them over.
When is, when do we expect that?
In March.
In March. I will circle that on my calendar. Red. Thank you.
All righty, that appears to be it. Thank you very much for your presentation, your willingness to come out and do this report.
Thanks for the opportunity, I appreciate it. Let me get you out of this. Okay, thank you.
All right, next I have a presentation. I have a presentation to make, Miami Grapevine Purple Heart City, and they have the deputy executive post commander, Godwin, come on up and I'll read this proclamation. It says that the Purple Heart is the oldest military decoration in use today, and involves from the badge of military merit created in 1782 by General George Washington for the common soldier. Purple Heart is specifically awarded to any member of the United States Armed Services wounded or killed in combat with declared enemy of the United States. So the city of Grapevine has great admiration and the utmost gratitude for all the men and women of the armed forces who stealthishly served their country and this, their county and this city and who have borne the brute of battle. Veterans have paid the high price for freedom by leaving their families and communities and placing themselves in harm's way for the good of all of us. The contributions and sacrifices of the men and women of Grapevine who served in the armed forces and vital in maintaining the freedoms and the way of life in joint citizens. Purple Heart recipients are an integral part of our society, and it's important that we acknowledge them for their courage and show them the support they earned. And so I'm very proud of having our citizens in our community who are declared today, March 4, 2014, as a dead, Grapevine is a designated city for Purple Heart City. So I'm very proud that they're here.
We'd like to present you with a plaque. Thank you, you've been making a great mind, Purple Heart City.
All right, we'll get back. And y'all are welcome to make any other comments you'd like to make.
Well, I'm not much of a speech maker, but to be in the Purple Heart, you have to be willing, but that doesn't make you more special than somebody else that's been in the military. But the whole idea behind the Purple Heart guy is every dime that we give, everyone in the Purple Heart organization is volunteering, so it all goes back to the veterans, and that's what this is all about.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
The staff is now prepared for the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board recommendation to make a proposal in regards of electronic cigarettes in parks and park facility. Mr. Doug Evans with the report.
All right, Honorable Mayor, Member City Council, at the April 20, 2010 meeting, the council approved a resolution to have the youth sports complexes at the Oak Road Park and Metamere Park as tobacco-free and as well as the Botanical Gardens. The board, Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, discussed electronic cigarettes, since that's a big thing coming up these days. They discussed that at their meeting last month, and the discussion centered around the fact that children cannot differentiate between e-cigarettes or electronic cigarettes and cigarettes. Therefore, the board is requesting that the council consider a resolution including e-cigarettes at those complexes and the Botanical Gardens as unlawful. If the council wants, we will bring back a amendment to the current ordinance and a resolution declaring that e-electronic cigarettes are unlawful at those parks and park facilities. Staff would also like the council to consider the swimming pools, since it's all based around children, and the spray grounds as well. So I would be happy to answer any questions you have on that.
I think this is fantastic, I think I'd like to, I concur that you go in those directions. I think that the Parks Board made some really good points about the inability for a lot of children to differentiate between e-cigarettes and traditional cigarettes. I think to, you know, just get those away from children in any environment is great. I think on top of that, you know, even though they don't have a lot of the same negatives as traditional cigarettes, that there's still odors that many people find unpleasant, and I think that we ought to make all of our parks and pools and everything else that you've captured there as pleasant as possible for the general population.
Well, and part of the problem that came up during the Parks Board discussions, the fact that it's, as Doug pointed out, sometimes difficult to differentiate one from the other, so it becomes an enforcement problem. Somebody's smoking an e-cigarette in the park and you go up and ask them to put it out, and this is an e-cigarette, you might feel a little apprehensive about going to the person sitting next to them and saying the same thing, and that might be a criminal cigarette. So it's, you know, it was just an attempt that the Parks Board felt it was worthwhile to go ahead and extend the ban from moving back up to e-cigarettes wherever the kids were involved in the park area. That was unanimously passed by the representatives of the Parks Board.
I think it's fine, I can just say I'm really glad my brother smokes e-cigarettes instead of the regular cigarettes anymore, because it's a lot less odor, I would say, but I'm fine with it, I think it's fine to bring it back too, it's consistent with what's with the smoking, because people don't know.
Do you know about their ball fields and any of the other parks in Grapevine that we need to consider?
Oh, there's practice fields, there are ball fields at Bear Creek Park that are game fields, basically, but Power Park also has some fields as well, that are practice fields, Bear Creek Park.
Was there a reason why we didn't consider extending this to those as well?
I went back and listened to all the council tapes and all that other stuff way back when, and there was a lot of discussion about a lot of the parks, but really, the council directed me to take it back to the Parks Board, which they said the youth sports complexes at the Metamere and Oak Road and as the Botanical Gardens, was a discussion.
I think it probably would be well to at least bring forward the possibility to do parks.
I don't know, let's talk about it. Maybe cigarettes.
Appreciate it very much.
I think it's just a waste of money.
Next, we'll consider a resolution authorizing the subtle source of purchase of multimedia services. Jody Brown.
Mr. Mayor, multimedia services contract was on the agenda last month, and it was handed to provide you further information. A multimedia services contract would provide live, online streaming to city council and planning zone commission meetings, would also provide for archiving for on-demand viewing. Swagit is the recommended vendor, and they would provide the videos in compatible formats for viewing on tablets, smartphones, and computers. This video would be hosted for a minimum of three years on Swagit's network services. This is a picture of City of Hurst, how the video indexing allows each snippet, if I may call it, to be indexed to an agenda item so that you can quickly run through the agenda and click on the information on the video that you're interested in. The contract covers the security that was concerned that the content is owned by the city, that the city will download after the council meets a DVD and be maintained in the city secretary's office. Swagit provides redundancy protocol for online, off-site, and onsite backup for the material, and that the video that's hosted on Swagit's network is not accessible to the public to download to manipulate.
Let me interrupt you right there a second if I could, Brown. Tell me about how there's no right to do it, but what prevents it from happening?
Brian, do you mind, Brian, this is Brian Howley from Swagit's.
So if, they can't download it by going on there and then clicking a download button because it's streaming, that's what we call pseudo-streaming, where when you, not to get too complicated, but when you stream something, it's just sending packets, so it's not one continuous spot for the end user. And so they don't have the option to download it. And then from there, like she mentioned, we store the content on our servers, we back it up to DVD, we back it up to hard drive, store that offsite. So you have three levels of redundancy as far as insecure facilities, like our streaming servers require biometric, fingerprinting, retina scans to be able to get to. But it doesn't allow them to download it, now I won't say you can't go out there and somehow hack it, you know, hack a download app like you can with YouTube, but it's much more secure than YouTube. So if someone really wanted to do, you know, to download it, like you can go to YouTube, you know, they're going to have to be very tech savvy to try and do it.
That is my concern, and I think it's been shared with some of the others, I don't think anybody really has objection to having the council meetings videotaped for distribution to the public, but the concern is that the fact that somebody might be able, and I don't know who, but some tech savvy individual might be able to download, copy, and edit that to meet perhaps another desired agenda is a troubling concern, and I just want to be sure that, you know, we have covered all the bases on getting or avoiding that point.
And I definitely understand that. And the best, you know, I've talked with some council members and some of the city staff, and, you know, I can't tell you a hundred percent, I can tell you ninety-nine point nine percent of the what-ifs, but I don't know, you know, that point zero 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 one percent. I can tell you there's redundancies, there's procedures, policies in place, the official record and content is, the general public does not have access to that, and I can only tell you from our experience, and we have a customer satisfaction of a hundred percent, we've never lost a government client since being a business starting in 2003, with clients such as Texas dot, Texas Health and Human Services, the Louisiana Legislature, I can only go off our track record, and that has never been a concern from those jurisdictions.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it. Go ahead, Julie.
Thank you, sir. The concern with the subscription fee is there will be no annual increase once the contract is signed, that is the set fee of thirteen fifty a month, which allows us to video fifty meetings, which are hosted then on Swagit's website. Should there need to be a change for some reason, there would be an additive to the contract, but the pricing would remain the same unless we chose to increase the number of meetings that we publish each year. Question on the usage reports, we've asked that Swagit provide us a detailed list each month of the amount of hits and the content that's being used so that we can...
Jody, are those going to be unique visits to the site?
We set up, we set up the way that, you know, what we're looking for, what people are interested in, and Swagit then works with us to do a individual, you know, monthly report for us, we'll say.
What is unique visits?
So the equipment that is covered in the contract would be four cameras here in the chambers, two in the PNC conference room, and then of course, all the equipment and fiber optics that are required there in the AV room. The reason that staff reviewed after talking to, you know, multiple vendors was with Swagit, they have the opportunity to remotely control the cameras, which does not require additional staff to, you know, run equipment during council and planning zone commission meetings. So the recommendation is for consideration of a resolution that would designate Swagit as a sole source vendor for the remote switching of the multimedia services to video city council planning zone commission meetings, authorize video equipment purchase and fiber-optic cable in the amount of fifty-seven thousand seven hundred and sixty dollars and eighty-five cents, and a multimedia services annual contract in the amount of sixteen thousand two hundred dollars. We ask that by approval of the resolution that you appropriate funds in the amount of seventy-three thousand nine hundred and sixty dollars and eighty-five cents. of seventy-three thousand nine hundred and sixty dollars and eighty-five cents. Um, and we carry the other fifty percent of that hardware and a hundred percent of the streaming appliances, the streaming splitter. We carry all that until delivery and installation.
Brian, while you're there, assuming that this is approved, what is the timeframe on completion, when the process of videotaping would begin?
They, it'll be installed no later than forty-five days from receiving that deposit check.
If there's no more questions on the approval?
Well, I want to make a comment first, Darlene, and then I'll probably second that. This is one of those issues that I really had to wrestle with because it's, although it's a minimal cost, uh, I'm not sure really how many citizens it's gonna be serving. And, and for those that it serves, I'm not sure, well, I'm not, it's not that I'm not sure, they will not be able to have any input into decisions because it'll be after the fact that they'll be watching it. Uh, and so from that aspect, it, it doesn't make a whole lot of sense to me. But on the other hand, like I said, it is a minimal cost. We talked about transparency in the city. We've got transparency to some extent with the, uh, agendas being public and available. Uh, we do have video recordings, and I will have to agree with Ms. Thompson who made a comment last council meeting, maybe listen to those. I'm familiar with everybody's voices, but the general public, if they wasn't, probably might not be, and so that would make a difference. But I guess what really brought me around to this was the fact that not too long ago, I think we all got a request from one of the schools to come out and talk to the school kids about what we do at a city council meeting and what our jobs as council people are. And I think about all of the times that we've had scouts up here, uh, working on merit badges, attending a city council meeting, trying to become involved in what city government is all about, that rather than transparency to the city, which I, I think we already do to some extent, I see that this could be a great educational tool, uh, again, for kids, for scouts, and, and for some people in the community. And so based upon that and the benefits it will provide, I would be glad to second Ms. Frees' motion.
I might add that, uh, I, I'm gonna support the motion, but, you know, it's been my observation that, uh, this electronic age brings a benefit to all of us, but it also, uh, is changing the way, uh, we conduct our lives. To give you an example, the, uh, computers, the cell phones, and some electronics, the kids are losing the ability to write because they don't have to write. They print. You get an invitation from a graduate today, or a thank you card is probably gonna be printed rather than written because they type. They use the keyboard all the time and they don't learn to write anymore. They have to print. And they're not programming their minds to remember because they don't have to remember. They look it up on their agenda or their calendar or on, uh, the internet. And I think it's important for people to be able to see how their city government works and what they do and how they act. And I think the more and more people see that, the more and more people appreciate what we have in this community and how we get it. My concern is, though, that democracy is a two-way street. It's just not me communicating with the public, it's the public communicating back to me. It's important for me to see people on the street and in the stores and in the chambers here where they can have a dialogue with me and tell me what they're thinking, what their opinions are, and not just be somebody that's out there, uh, that you never see a face or you never get to talk to about what their opinions are because they're a big part of our democracy and our government. And I hope that electronically we don't lose that part of our ability to, uh, serve as public officials because it's a necessary element. It's an important element. Otherwise, I'm limited what my own ideals might be. And, and y'all might not agree with those at all. So I, I, I think that we need to encourage people to still come to the council meetings, still communicate with their public officials, and, and tell people what they like their community to be and what they like and what they don't want.
All righty. Anybody else have any comments? Do we have a motion and a second? All in favor?
All opposed.
Motion carries. All righty. New business, out of five. Uh, consider approval of the guaranteed maximum price, uh, construction, expansion, and renovation of Community Activities Center and construction of the Central Utility Plant of the Library Area, CA. Uh, Mr. Doug Evans.
All right, Honorable Mayor of the City, Council of Eliot is one of the most exciting projects to really take by the Department of Parks Recreation and Land Management, the expansion of Community Activities Center. We are now in our temporary facility, next to John Abbot's, and our feedback on the citizens have been positive thus far. Uh, we're gonna start out the presentation. Kevin's gonna go through some elevations of the interior and exterior, and then I'll finish it up with the guaranteed maximum price.
Honorable Mayor, Members of Council, I'd like to quickly go through the presentation and feel free to stop at any time if there's a question on any of the images. Just the first thing I want to start out with, the goal that we started with was to provide a multi-generational facility to enhance the quality of life and promote a sense of community. And I think as we go through these images, uh, you'll see the team has done a good job at that. Speaking of the team, I'd like to recognize, uh, representatives from our architect firm, BRS, is here tonight, and our construction manager firm, Adolphson Peterson, is here tonight as well. They've, they've certainly been team players and it's been a great project up to this point, so, thank you. Uh, here's the site plan. I believe everyone has seen that. Just shows the connectivity of basically the three buildings and the orientation of the site to the east with the parking there. This is the east elevation of the building. Uh, that'll be the, the main front door to your right, screen right, and then the alternate location on the left for the, uh, Senior Activity Center side will be on the left. This is the southern elevation, so if you're standing in the library and you're looking out the windows of the library, this is sort of what you'll see. Uh, you'll notice to the right, there's an arbor. That's where the community rooms are off the senior wing. And then towards the left of that image is, um, the pool area and the splash, uh, spray ground that'll be coming out of the pool. And then you're starting to see the slides kind of jutting out of the building, and those will be on the western elevation. Some of the colors on this are diagrammatic. Uh, the slides, for one example, are just to kind of make them show up against the color of the brick and the stone there.
Kevin, let me real quickly, you said to stop here. The slides being on the west side, obviously in the summer, that sun's gonna be hot out. What kind of material or, let me rephrase it, I guess a special material is being used that will heat up?
Yes, sir. There, it's, it's a type of fiberglass with a gel coating on it, uh, which is, it's similar to what's at Dove Park. Uh, although those are not enclosed, but it's a little bit different coating on that. And of course, the water flow through that is gonna keep that, uh, moving as well, so... And, uh, wrong way. And the north elevation, uh, basically showing, uh, the Central Utility Plant. Floor plan, I'm not gonna go through that in detail, but I just wanted to show that. Um, with the reversed entrance on the east side, you'll notice the two entrances there on the east, and then the pool, uh, on the west side, or the, the main changes of the gymnasium stay the same, the record board porch stay the same, and then the community rooms. Um, and this is, once again, just showing a, a general furniture layout, some of these rooms to kind of give you a, a sense of space and, and what will be in there. Upstairs, uh, the track will remain as it is, uh, in its configuration, and then I'll show you some interior images on that as well. This is the interior, uh, proposed interior. As you come in the front door of the facility, uh, you'll notice, uh, the top floor. And I brought the image boards. I'll leave these down here. They show the actual pieces of tile that, uh, for it, and they're down here as well. And as you come in, you'll notice the check-in desk is there. You'll continue all the way through. There's a, an up close of the check-in desk, and then you'll do a little straight, uh, back to the pool area, the game room, and the dance rooms are located towards the back of the facility there. This is just another seating area. That's basically looking, uh, if you were looking out the front doors that exist today, where that glass wall is, that's the, the current front door. So you'd be looking through the front door to the west into the new pool area. I'm back kind of at the front desk area, uh, and I'm looking to the south, down to the senior activity wing, and this will be where some of the classrooms are and the events halls. Uh, at the end of that is proposed some artwork that are highlighting, uh, images of our Sister City program. That'll haul to draw your eye down there. And then this is some images of the entrance of the senior wing. Uh, one entrance is, is looking, there is basically a reversed image, one is looking out the door and one is looking into the building there. Off of that is the senior lounge area. Um, there's been a lot of thought put into this area, very homely, warm environment with a fireplace, a TV, and then a, a separate area off of that for park games and a social gathering spot and coffee and that kind of stuff right there. This image shows the interior of the exhibit halls A and B. Basically, um, they can be shut into two separate rooms or one large room. And then you'll notice the image on your right is primarily where the lunches that are served today in our current facility, they would be served out of that room right there as well, uh, very similar to how it's served today at the current facility. This is one image of the gymnasiums, uh, the, the main thing that'll be different in there. The wall that is around the track will come down and that will open up with an open railing to really open up the look and the feel of the building. Uh, the other thing, there'll be windows that will be placed strategically around the track to allow more light to come in and to really open that up. And then the other major change in these areas is you'll notice we introduced some color. Uh, so different walls will have different color and try to bring a little bit more life into the gymnasium spaces. Uh, the track, um, it'll be basically a two-tone track. Um, the track will be resurfaced, and then everywhere there's a pedestrian crossing, there'll be kind of a hatch pattern for that, just to designate, uh, when people cross the track. This is an image of the workout facility, the fitness room. The large colored areas on the roof are basically skylights, uh, to allow more natural light in there. And then the color palette will then come through that skylight and bleed through the, the roof and the panels as you see there. And then there's also a couple of wall dividers that will have that same colored image. And the, the image, in the image that died to your left is a glass wall panel, and that will allow people that are cutting through the fitness room to go to the other rooms, the fitness rooms, to, to not walk in and get injured as they're going through there. This is an image from the fitness room looking out the window down into the pool. So as you're on the cardio equipment or the workout equipment, you'll be looking down into the pool area. There'll be a film on that glass, so as you're down in the pool, when you look up at that, you won't see the people in there. There'll be an image over the glass, um, as well. And this is an image inside the pool area, uh, basically featuring the color palettes, uh, purples. Uh, the glass mosaic tiles, uh, will be all over the walls and the columns. And then you'll notice there in the very center is the play structure, uh, very similar to the one at Dove Pool, but a little bit larger, uh, for the younger children there in the middle. Uh, one thing I didn't point out on this last image are the lap lanes. That's basically the area underneath the, um, workout facilities above it is where the lap lanes are. And this is just a different image showing a different perspective looking south, uh, back through the area, and you'll notice the doors that'll lead you out to the southern area into the splash ground. This is an image looking back up north, and you'll see the film that I was referring to of the workout area. So if you're down in the pool, you won't be able to stare exactly up in the workout facility. This is an image of the child watch. Uh, this was probably an earlier image. We've refined that a little bit with the help of the Facilities Committee. This will take on a heavy train theme, uh, atmosphere in that room and really play off a Puffy and the train element. And there's some developments that were happening in that room, but really a fun, unique space, uh, for the younger children in there. And then this is another image of the indoor play component that'll basically be next to the child watch room, uh, and it'll have the same kind of look and feel as Casey's clubhouse, once again, taking off the transportation theme of Puffy the train, planes, trucks, and automobiles. And be happy to answer any questions.
Very exciting. Really is exciting. I can't wait to take my grandbaby.
It's gonna be fun.
I've had a citizen ask me one question, that is about the process for identifying the contractor. It's my memory that back whenever we, uh, we were talking about the, uh, value engineering that we did, either an RFQ or a bid process or something at that time. Could you all just very briefly explain what happened then and that this is a natural succession and, uh, as a part of that process?
Uh, just like for the design, we went through an RFQ, uh, and, uh, obviously had a lot of interest in the project and interviewed, had a team of city employees that interviewed, and chose the one that we thought would do the best as far as building the facility.
And there were a number of applicants?
Oh, yes, oh, yes. Yes, there was.
Thank you.
Okay, now we'll get on to the guaranteed maximum price. And just so the council knows, the, uh, existing Community Activities Center, the grand opening for that was October fourteenth, nineteen ninety-six. We went through basically the same public process for that facility back then as we went through for this expansion. Uh, one of the highest priorities in the master plan that you approved in May of two thousand and eleven was the expansion of the Community Activities Center. Knowing that, the council commissioned a feasibility study in February two thousand and twelve to determine the citizen needs and also to establish a business plan for the Community Activities Center. Our feasibility consultant at that time recommended that we look at, uh, senior activities at this facility to be a multi-generational facility. The expansion, as you've just seen, includes aquatics, suspended fitness, fitness room, indoor/outdoor playground, and, uh, additional programming rooms. The current facility is forty-eight thousand square foot. The council approved an additional sixty thousand square foot or one hundred and eight thousand square foot facility. Uh, the feasibility consultant, if you remember, uh, said that we would need to be looking at approximately two thousand, or two thousand, two foot per resident for a facility. So if you look at our ultimate bill out of fifty-four thousand, approximately one hundred and eight thousand is right in what that national standard would be. Uh, following the feasibility study, the citizens approved thirty-point-one million dollars, uh, in bonds to expand the facility back in November two thousand and twelve. It, uh, in December two thousand and twelve, the council approved the contract with Barker Rinker CCAT, uh, architecture for the design of the community activity or expansion and the renovation of the facility. Uh, then in two, uh, two thousand and thirteen, in March, the council approved the pre-construction agreement with Adolphson Peterson to, uh, to construct the facility. Uh, much work has been done on the facility as far as design with the council and with staff up to this point, and the community feedback, as I mentioned a little earlier, has been very positive on this project up to this day. Uh, I appreciate the great work of Kevin Mitchell and Chris Smith in, really in participating in the design with Barker Rinker CCAT and with Adolphson Peterson up to this point. And they're gonna have a big part in the construction, uh, management of the facility as we get going under construction. Uh, everything goes as planned. Uh, the Community Activities Center, uh, will open to the public January of two thousand and fifteen, and the aquatic section of that will come a little bit later, uh, in, uh, we're predicting in, in May of two thousand and fifteen. Uh, in closing, staff recommends the council approve guaranteed maximum price, uh, for the expansion renovation of the Community Activities Center and the construction of the Central Utility Plant for the library and the Community Activities Center, uh, in the amount of twenty-five million, eight-hundred-and-sixty-nine dollars, eight-hundred-and-sixty-nine-thousand, six-hundred-and-fifty-eight dollars from Adolphson Peterson Construction. Uh, this included the five-hundred-thousand-dollar contingency, which is two percent of the project. And I'd be happy to answer any questions the council may have.
So Doug, like, they haven't been paid for sixty-five thousand for the pre-construction work they've been working on?
Uh, they didn't pay that much. That was the pre-construction part of that, so... But we're excited.
I'm, I'm excited about, uh, the architect and the contractor, but I'm excited about the project and where it'll get, get moving there.
I'm pleasantly surprised about the pace that we'll be able to get this all locked out within ten months. I mean, that's an enormous project with that, you know, to get that done in ten months with the aquatics trolling behind. Uh, so I'm impressed with the way they put together a project plan and how they've accomplished that.
You give a blessing to the north gate.
Well, I think everybody's done a fabulous job.
Are you making a motion?
Yes.
All right.
I have a motion in a second. Any discussion? Not all in favor? All opposed? Motion carries.
All right, thank you.
Now we've got out of six, a contract for engineering and technical services for the community activity project. Kevin?
Honorable Mayor of the City, I have before you is to approve a contract, uh, to fur growth for a hundred and six thousand dollars, eight-hundred, or one-oh-six, eight-one-six, plus twenty percent contingency. Um, we've sent out RFQs to many firms. We received four back. Um, I enlisted the expertise of myself and Public Works to evaluate those proposals based on the construction materials and methods. The proposal from Frugro, the 20% contingency. The proposal from Frugro is an estimate. Basically, what we did is, once we picked them, we then started negotiating with Frugro. We submitted the plans to them, they worked with Adolphson Peterson on the materials and methods, how they were going to build the job, what the testing was going to require, the timeframe of the testing, when the tests were going to be needed to happen, the drive, there's a lot of factors that go in that, the scheduling of that. They then produced a schedule of values based on how Adolphson Peterson was going to build the job, that's how they derived it, their $106,000 amount. We don't know if that's going to be 100% how it's going to happen, the contract that we're asking for has unit price measurements, so where we think we need one concrete test, we may in fact need two. We just don't know that because we don't know what we'll face when we get into that. There's some other unknowns with renovating the building, as you're aware of, there's some testing that may come on the structural elements and things like that, so that's the reason for the 20%. That falls in line with the budget that we have set aside for the $30.1 million.
The only question I have is, why is the contingency not included in SANS, includes 20% contingency versus add-on? That seems different than how we normally do things. Does my question make sense?
It does, the reason being is because I wanted the $106,000 to be reflective of the proposal and the contract that Frugro has submitted to the city.
Okay, and there's no contingency in that contract?
Correct, correct. We will contract with them for what they've proposed to us, it'll only be based on the unit prices if we need additional testing.
So if it goes up outside of that, includes some of that 20%, are you going to go back and report that to us, or, I mean, obviously, we're approving that 20% contingency, but sort of their communication?
I believe that was the request, is that we would communicate that to you, whether it were early or whatever. Obviously, we'll keep you abreast, I'm not sure how we're going to report on the progress of the project yet, but I would imagine that would be part of our standard reporting with this project for all, all the.
Kevin, all of these lab work companies evaluated the specifications and plans correctly for coming up with their.
I'm not going to guarantee that they all evaluate the plans, they all have the availability to do that, based on some of the submitted, obviously, they may not.
Because there is a wide range, is that what you said?
No, just the thoroughness of the proposal would be my commentary, but yes, we have them, they're at the plant houses.
That is the way I did it, make you laugh, this most federal proposal.
Yes, sir.
I make the motion.
Second. I have a question, can I make it?
Oh, okay.
So they each provided unit prices on the various elements in the RFQ?
No, ma'am.
Okay, because we don't have a big tech question or anything in here like you.
No, ma'am, it's a request for qualifications, and how the process works is, once they have submitted that and the team evaluated it, we then go to the number one candidate, we negotiate with them, pricing, the pricing seemed fair, it was in line with every other testing that we've ever had done, so then we brought the proposal. If for some reason, something happened and our discussions with Frugro terminated, we would then legally send them a note, a letter saying we've terminated negotiations with you, and then we would go to the second firm that the committee had ranked.
So what was the general price spread on the unit prices bottom line? Where did this involve, or before that you responded to, where did Frugro fall in the prices that were submitted?
Let me explain it differently.
I understand how it works, I'm trying to figure out, were they, would they in effect have been the high proposer, in the middle of it, or they've been the low? There's got to be some way that that would have been extrapolated during the evaluation process.
That's not part of the evaluation because we're not asking them legally during that process, we're not asking them to provide pricing to us at that time, we're asking them to the fourth market. We did fact-check that based on other testing firms and other projects of this comparable size and scope, they felt well within line, if not to the lower half of that pricing structure.
So they did provide unit prices?
Frugro, we have a unit price schedule with Frugro, yes, ma'am.
And was that done subsequent to our selecting them, or was it done as part of their application process?
Subsequent.
Another question. We got our motion and a second, I believe, any further debate? All in favor, all opposed, motion carries.
And I would remind everybody that John's going to provide us with a summary of all of the contingency funds at the end of the year.
Item seven.
Thank you. Honorable Mayor, Members of Council, item, the next item is the purchase of the indoor play component for the Community Activities Center from the Playwell Group, this is the same group that brought us the wonderful amenities of Casey's Clubhouse. The only difference is this will be indoor play, this is for a turnkey installation, surfacing, and items for the indoor play that will have the transportation theme in the amount of $304,422.30 with no contingency. Be happy to answer any questions.
Second. Any discussion, not all in favor, all opposed, motion carries. Thank you, Kevin. Item eight, resolution authorizing the purchase of railroad crossing repairs for Main Street crossing of the Cotton Bell Line. Stan?
Thank you, Mayor, Members of the City Council. Item eight is a sole source purchase of railroad crossing repairs for the Main Street Crossing on the Cotton Bell Railroad. You can see, we've got a few pictures that just show you what the crossing looks like there on Main Street. And this is principally a result of the cross ties rotting away, that's going to be the biggest undertaking as part of this. Railworks Track System is the firm that we are recommending, and we're doing that primarily because they are under contract with Fort Worth and Western, do all their maintenance work for, I think, a three-year period, and Fort Worth and Western really won't allow anybody else on their tracks except Railworks. Price is $75,275, and this actually represents a pretty good price because Fort Worth and Western is allowing this work to be done as maintenance work rather than new construction. If it was new construction, we would have to replace the rails with a heavier rail. As it is, the contractor will come in and basically lift the rails up, they've got equipment that will lift the rails up, they'll strip the cross ties out from under them, put new cross ties, new ballast, restake them, and then they'll place concrete panels to replace the rotor panels. It'll take them about five working days to do that work, and we'll apply the traffic control to move traffic to one side of Main Street for two-way traffic for two to three days, and then move traffic to the other side.
Will we be able to put up some signage to let people know in advance that it's coming? I think that would be really helpful.
We'll do that. They're 15 to 20 days out from the time we give them the go-ahead.
Maybe at least like a week in advance, so people might go duly or some other way than Main Street.
Do either of the rotor tires are replaced, or just traditional grease-up ties, or are they doing something more?
I think they'll be, no, I think they're standard, standard ties.
So Main Street will always have at least a couple of lanes open? Does it ever close it all, I mean, altogether? Okay.
It should be able to maintain two lanes, one lane in each direction.
I'll move for approval.
Second. All in favor, all opposed, motion carries. Item nine, consider a resolution in regards to participation in our central Texas Council Government's Regional Solid Waste Program.
Thank you, Mayor, Members of the City Council. COG has issued a call for projects for their 2014-2015 Regional Solid Waste Program. We are proposing a funding request of $55,700. The call for projects is to further the goals that are consistent with the Regional Solid Waste Management Plan and expanding multifamily housing, excuse me, recycling is one of the programs that is on that list that COG maintains. The binary approach that we would be taking is basically outreach and education, providing information to the residents of the apartments, the majority of the apartments in town actually do provide recycling facilities to their residents now, it's just our goal is to try and increase the utilization of those recycling facilities, and this program would be to basically just reinforce and remind folks that if that recycling is available, there's a benefit to it, helps the environment, that type of thing. It will be something that we would budget for in the 2015 budget, but we will be reimbursed for all the expenses up to whatever we're awarded by COG, and we should know that prior to June, that's when the in-local agreements actually be signed between the city and the council. We have to answer any questions.
So that grant amount would be the amount that we would put in the budget?
Yes, and it would be, the grant ranges from a low of $15,000 to a high of $125,000. We may not get to $55,000, we might get less, but whatever.
Would there be any recurring costs for us in coming years?
I don't think so, no.
So this is simply an educational-type program?
Yes.
I'll move for approval, anything in terms of recycling, I think it's good, and a lot of multifamily people don't have, you know, there's not enough education to teach them. I mean, people recycle if it's easy, they know how, they know it's easy on your back leg or your shoulder, so I'll move for approval. Sorry, I didn't say that right. Sorry, don't quote that, Ma'Am.
I'll second. We got a motion and a second, any further discussion, if not all in favor, all opposed, motion carries. Thank you, Stan. This brings us to the consent agenda, items 10 through 16 are not scheduled for any council discussion, and the guests present can request any of these items be removed from the consent for further discussion. At this time, if you have any requests, I don't hear any from the council. Item 10 through 16 is consent, the motion is in order. I make the motion, we approve consent items 10 through 16 as consent. Second. All in favor, all opposed, motion carries. That completes our agenda, thank you for being with us, a motion to adjourn is in order. Please, Jerry? Thank you. All in favor, all opposed, council stands in favor.